Okay, welcome everyone for today's special meeting for Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at four P M. Ethics training. Roll call please. Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Catherine Solario.
Present.
Treasurer Michelle Lopez.
Absent.
Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Megan, I believe you're next.
Yes, thank you. We will be starting the ethics training officially soon. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back from our special meeting. So we have on the agenda, let's see here. What is next? The consideration and necessary action approval of Resolution 2024-48 for the Parlayed Landscape, Maintenance and Lighting District, and that is Javier?
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, council. Since we're moving quick, again, this is a continuation from last meeting, and it's just the final version of it to adopt the Landscaping and Lighting District and to allow me to record that and get that in before the 31st of this month. And again, we do this every year.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Any questions from the council?
No.
Any from the public? Hearing now, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina, second by Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five yes. Next item. Number two, the Measure C, Local Transportation Purposes Passed Through Projects and Program Funds Annual Allocation for Fiscal Year 2024-25. I believe that is also Javier.
Yes, thank you, Javier. So yeah, this is, with this, what I can do is I can go to submit our form to COG and we can receive our Measure C funds for that fiscal year. We do this every year, and this is how they allocate our funds to us.
Okay. Any questions? Any from the public? Okay, hearing now, so do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion from Diego and second by Sabrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five yes. We can move that, and now this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, welcome everyone for today's meeting Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six thirty P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Elma Bestran.
Present.
Mayor Prochem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Captain Solorio.
Present.
City Treasurer Michelle Lopez.
Present.
Thank you.
Please raise for the flags, salute.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to? Are we gonna do any additions or deletions right now? I think there was there any deletions after all? Okay, so then we can move on to public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the?
I had a deletion for one.
Oh, we have a deletion.
Sorry. It was the water rate one?
Um, I, I think it's important for the public. Is there anybody here from the public that wanted to address the water rate?
Yeah, but I wanted to table it because the guy who's supposed to present.
Oh, he's not here.
He's not here, correct. And I, I have questions.
Okay.
From what he presented to us.
Last time.
Last, wow, yeah. What's on here on our agenda, I have questions and he's not here, so.
Okay.
I want to hear from him. So that, I believe that's item.
I wasn't aware he wasn't here.
He was gonna be here, but he had a planned vacation and it was all scheduled with his family, so.
Okay, so you did have a deletion and that should have been brought up.
I was, I was gonna present it, but I don't have the background that he has on it, so I'll take out.
Yeah, we do need him here.
So are we deleting or just tabling to the next one?
Table?
Or move it to when he's?
Available?
We need to do something about it because we do, we do need, um, we do need to do something about it because there's a concern with the rate. I was also gonna address it to him as far as, um, the, the fees that he did at the last time, so he does need to be here and we need to do it.
Want to do it for the next council meeting?
Yes.
Upon, upon availability.
No, because we need to address it. If he's always gonna say I'm not available, then we need to make sure he's here. He needs to be here.
That's what I'm saying.
We got, he got.
I also think, I also think that we should get in contact with him and see when he's available. I'm sure he'll have a day.
So we can put it on the agenda. Meeting, can you put him?
Intendedly schedule it for the next meeting and then I'll get his feedback.
And let him know that he needs to be here because these are concerns from residents as well.
Correct.
So, so he needs to be here, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Number eleven.
So that's the number eleven. We're gonna, um, uh, move it for the next council meeting, which is, what's the date on that?
Sorry, mayor, it's, it's item thirteen.
Item thirteen for, what's the next date for the council meeting? September fifth for, uh, item thirteen, please.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, alright, so that one will be moved and so we can move on, um, again, I was bringing it up for the public. Anybody from the public? Go ahead.
Nada mas quiero dar las gracias de Javier porque ya comenzaste el proyecto del agua después de tantos años de estar peleando de que necesitábamos tomar el agua limpia. Y también, Kathy, te quiero dar las gracias porque tú fuiste una de comenzantes con Dolores White Foundation también a hablar, hablar del agua. Sé que no eres popular con muchos de nosotros, pero tu trabajo es no ser popular sino representar a tu gente que te mandó, que votó por ti. Es lo que yo pienso. Sí, tengo pendiente también del agua y vamos a hablar después, pero ojalá que ya esté limpia para ese tiempo pues está nos diciendo que ya no va a tener, uh, el one, two, three, uh, para diciembre de, de este año y lo hemos venido extendiendo diciembre de que los últimos seis, siete años ya lo hemos extendido a diciembre. So espero de que si vamos a pagar un rate, uh, un increase, que ya el agua esté, esté limpia porque ahorita todavía tiene residuos del pestisae y está bien claro que puede causar cáncer en algunos de nosotros, los que ya estamos grandes. En los niños pues no sabemos, porque no, no hay un nivel a qué edad o qué tanto le puede causar a los niños algún daño. Esa ha sido mi preocupación todo el tiempo. Mayor termina, aquí te doy las gracias, ah, y a todo el council. Por fin hallaron el dinero, no sé dónde estaría escondido, pero por fin lo hallaron y ya me da gusto que ya están haciendo trabajo aunque nos está oliendo la cabeza que nos terminan el agua o nos las clausuran por ocho horas, seis horas. Muchísimas gracias.
Okay, anybody else? I, I think there's one behind you. I'm sorry, Trino.
I wanted to bring up something, I think it was from two meetings ago with the, uh, dog that was hit by a car.
I'm sorry, I think we're live streaming. There's an issue. I did get a message about the, there's no sound. Anybody else know if there's any sound from the live stream? Can anybody, anyone check? Just in case, just in case. That is it? Thank you very much. It is working. Okay, go ahead.
As I was saying, I asked, um, to get something put on the agenda because as of right now, the city of Parlour doesn't have any, what's the word I'm looking for? Any, um.
Emergency services?
Right, emergency services and I know you're not really supposed to answer my questions, but it's something that could happen at any time and I'd like to know if you can put that as an agenda item, if it's something the council needs to approve or not because every day that passes, there's more chances of animals out there suffering when they've been hit by a car and residents are told there's nothing they can do, animal control is off, you're on your own.
So can we, we can put that on the agenda for, uh, September fifth, please chief?
Okay, yeah.
That's what I'm asking for. Another thing I wanted to touch on is there's elections coming up, coming up in November. There's been a few social media posts that are, I understand people have the right of freedom of speech, but when you're constantly degrading other people that are running for positions, it gets kind of old. And instead, my recommendation is telling the community what you're able to bring to this, to the council and not be putting down and bashing others that don't deserve it. Freedom of speech goes both ways. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening, TRD, Happy Mental, three oh five, three oh five Fifth Street. Uh, I just wanted to, number one, welcome back mayor from your trip. We know you had a very successful one. And I wanted to say something about what was, uh, what happened last, last meeting with Mrs. Garza, that she was forced to take something out of, uh, the minutes that her, the commu, the commu, the community put her there because she's an elected official and she was doing the job that the community put her there to do. For them, for four or three members vote to take those things out of the, uh, out of the minutes tells me that they are trying to deceive the community, that they walked out of a meeting. Whether they got paid or not, it doesn't matter. The thing is that they walked out. Ms. Garza, you've done a fantastic job in the last twenty-four years. You shouldn't, they should have never, uh, forced you to do something that you were put there by the community to do. And that's what we were all put, when we're up there, we're put there by the community to do what the community needs are. And when we start covering up for ourselves, that's not being, that's being deceitful. And you need, you need to be more transparent with the community and let them know what you guys are doing because this is not fair to them because they go to the voting polls and they vote for you and then you turn around and you, in reality, you slap them in the face by doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we can move on to the consent item. I have an item that I am going to pull. Is there anybody else that has an item to pull? Hearing none, I'm pulling item number one, which is the document, uh, the item which approves a check report dated for July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four through August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, which includes the American Express and BMO credit card for July. Um, I would like to strike that language off this because we don't approve expenses that were already made through the credit card. That is the responsibility of the administration, so, um, I would like for that to reflect in the minutes that the only thing we are, uh, have on the agenda is approve the check report dated for July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four through July through August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. You, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask, was, was there a specific reason that was put on there? Was that a missed typo print?
I would have to look at that.
Okay. Yeah, it was just odd. I don't, it was odd.
We've, we've never approved, uh, expenses from a credit card before, so that is, uh, administration. So, um, Dorothy, can you please reflect that in the minutes that that is strike from the actual, um, calen, consent calendar for the check warrants? Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, are you making a motion to strike?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by, uh, Councilmember Ramirez Rodriguez, excuse me. Um, any comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then we can do that. Uh, the next? Yes, motion carried.
Motion carried, just take it.
Yeah. So we can move on to, um, item number two. Oh, oh, we're gonna need two through six. Uh, we're gonna approve. Oh, yeah, we're, so there is no other item to pull, pull? Any from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve, uh, consent calendar?
I have, I motioned.
So, uh, Diego, do you have a second? By, uh, Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is, um, item number seven, consideration and necessary action, adopting the resolution appointing Megan Boranian, attorney at law for the interim city attorney. Do we have any, any comments? I would like to, uh, welcome, uh, Megan to, for being our interim. You know, she's, uh, has years of experience in, in, uh, in this field. Um, if you'd like to introduce yourself a little bit, Megan, would that be okay?
Sure. Uh, don't mind me, those lawyers, we stand whenever we can, but Megan Boranian, Irish Armenian and it's my pleasure to be in the city of Parlour. It's a beautiful town and I've worked a little bit with some of your staff in the past, so it'll be my pleasure to introduce myself and get to know you a little bit. Um, I've been city attorney here when I was with Lazzano Smith, acting as city attorney and also some other cities and public agencies in the valley. Um, and, um, I also teach at the college level in business law and, and, um, sit as a hearing officer from time to time, but I have a law practice in the city of Clovis and, uh, um, I was asked to assist with, um, some interim work and so you'll see a little bit more of me and uh, again, it's my pleasure to be with your council and with all of you from the city of Parlour. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say, and I just want to say thank you, Megan, because, um, as many of you know, um, may, or don't know, but Megan was the only one who actually took on and applied for the interim position, so I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, I also want to thank you for the training that you did today for the sta, for the council.
Thank you.
I really feel it's really, really beneficial to all of us as a group.
Good, my pleasure.
Thank you, it was really needed. Thank you so much. Is there any comments from the, um, public? Okay, hearing ends, so we have a motion to approve item number seven.
Motion.
Motion by Diego, second by Sabrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Next item is item number eight. City, uh, acting city manager, David Sirda.
Evening, mayor, council members and residents of Parlour. Uh, what you have before you, council, is a continuance resolution because we do not have an adopted budget. So staff recommends council approve, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five continuance resolution whereas the city budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five has not been completed and when there is a need in accordance with law for an operating budget, continuous resolution will serve as a practical and flexible approach to managing city finances and operations throughout the fiscal year. This will allow the city to adjust spending priorities and allocate resources and, and address emerging needs and challenges in a timely manner without waiting for annual budget cycles. This will allow the city to respond effectively to changing economic conditions and unexpected events. The continuous resolution will provide city streamlined budgetary decision-making process, avoid delays facilitate efficient resources allocations based on real-time data performance indicators and community feedback. This will aid in our ability to track budget variances, assess program effectiveness and make informed decisions to optimize resource utilization and achieve budgetary goals. This type of transparency enhances our ability and trust in the city government's fiscal practices. This will allow the city to support strategic initiatives, capital projects, economic development programs, public safety enhancements, infrastructure improvement, grant compliance and other funding priorities on a regular basis. This will allow the city of Parlour to oper, to appropriate the expenditures of funds for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five all in accordance with the budget adopted for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, whereas staff recommends the city council approve continuous resolution to streamline and move forward city operations and manage ongoing, regular business in a fiscally responsible temporarily until such time as the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five has been completed, at which time the council will amend this resolution and/or adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
And when is the timeline for the actual budget to be presented? Because this is just the continuance of the same budget that was approved for the last fiscal year. So, um, do you have a date?
So, currently?
Yes.
Uh, because we had a sudden resignation at our finance director position. We have our, our prior consultant that we have a contract with who has stepped in is gonna help us finalize that and prepare that for our next council meeting. That is, uh, the, the discussion I, I had with the consultant.
In his defense, he wasn't here long enough to actually work on it and be, and prior to that, it had been presented to us by the consultants that were working on it, that they were gonna present to us. So the ones that were actually working on it was not the former, um, city manager that resigned. It was the ones that we hired through, um, Ryan Jolly and, um, the other person that came in to fill in.
Currently, the, uh, the numbers that were presented, uh, in respect to the budget and the analysis of the budget were completed by the, the finance director that resigned. So that information was submitted to me via email prior to his, his departure. So that information is gonna be transferred over to the consultant and he's gonna review it, but in, in our conversation, he feels comfortable that, uh, it will be presentable by the next council meeting, which is September fifth.
Because Daryl was here, if you recall.
Yeah.
Presenting to us and said, right, that he was going to present the actual budget, which was before the actual, uh, finance director that was hired, so.
Right.
So then, do they have it or they do not?
Currently, I have an email from the.
No, no, from, from whoever's working on it now.
From, from right now?
Yeah, because we're already getting into September and.
Right, so.
They've been working on it for a while.
I am going to provide that information to our consultant and he said.
Is it a new consultant?
No, 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 it's the one we have contract with. He's the one that, uh, set up the recruitment, Sherman Dix.
Okay, this is where I'm getting confused because I thought it was Daryl that came here and he's, he's the one that presented when, uh, when the other finance manager was with him and they presented to us.
I thought that was for the, for the.
No.
No, it was, he, they were both working on the budget.
This is, uh, the, the council agreed to approve a contract for a consultant to come in and recruit a finance director and assist us with the budget because we, the.
That was a separate one.
So, so that is the consultant who recruited our finance director and he's gonna help us with the budget.
I will forward you the actual live stream when they actually presented the, what they were talking about that day that they were going to present to us. So I'll forward you the live stream.
Okay.
So that you can listen to what he says because we were under the, I was under the impression he was working on it, so then he was not.
Once the new finance director came on, then that consultant.
Took over.
He, he took over the consultant's, uh, work, so Daryl.
Yeah.
He took over Daryl's work because we no longer needed Daryl because we had a finance director.
I'll forward it to you, so that way you can kind of look into it and see what's happening. Okay, that's my question and that's it. Any, anybody else? Any, anybody else?
So, the, the goal is to have the budget on the next council meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any, any questions from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina, second by Diego, all those in favor? Motion carries, five yes. Next is the consideration and necessary action on the on-call take-home vehicle policy. Serta?
Mayor, council members, residents of Parlour, before you have you, is an on-call take-home vehicle policy. This policy was generated and crafted from different policies from other agencies, as well as the police department's policy regarding take-home vehicles. The recommendation to, is to approve the take-home vehicle policy, adding subsection A under subsection nine of section one of the, of the city's personnel policies for the city of Parlour. Staff understands circumstances may arise where department vehicles must be used by city employees to commute to and from work assignment. Staff recognizes the importance of providing clear guidance policies and procedures to govern the use of city-owned vehicles by employees for official duties and purposes while promoting accountability, efficiency, and cost-efficient transportation solutions. Staff also recognizes the critical role of city employees who are designated for on-call standby duties to respond to emergencies, responsive activities, on-call duty, duties, crisis management, disaster preparedness to safeguard public safety, protect property, mitigate risk in emergency situations, incidents, and essential services outside of the regular working hours, requiring access to city-owned vehicles for immediate response, notably, and efficient deployment for employees engage, employees engaged in emergency response activities. Staff understands this is an industry standard for the reasons mentioned above, therefore making a recommendation to council to approve the take-home vehicle policy. Before you, below that, there are eight guidelines for take, the take-home policy. And of course, it's not for personal use, you can't go to the grocery store, you can't pick up your kids from school, strictly for city business. It's for call-outs only after hours and on weekends, which is typically when, when these situations arrive. Members can't generally have to live within 30-minute driving time from the city. Parking must be available, all vehicles must be locked. So there's a number of regulations and mechanisms in place to control any liability with, with a take-home vehicle. We did check with four or five other cities, nearby cities, and it was three to two. So some cities do have the take-home policy and some don't. So it's just a matter of.
So what is the tracking mechanism that you're going to put to make sure that there, is there actually, like where they log the miles? Because I know that the city doesn't do that, to logging miles. I think you need to
Right, right.
to implement that as well for even when they're actually working. Because the question came up, and this was part of the credit card misuse that was brought up for them using the credit card in a different city to put, to put gas on a city vehicle, but there is no way of tracking to make sure, like the miles and the gas and all that is tracked, where they have to record all that information. And, and I know that in the State Department, they have that so that they can, they can ensure that there is no misappropriation in those, the use of the credit card or use of the city vehicle. This is why you log all the miles and you log the actual gases in there. So I think that it would be important for, if you wanted to recommend something like that, that there is some checks and balances, because it's already been questionable just with the things that I brought up in the past for the city credit card being misused. And, and it's been specifically for, supposedly is what's been said to me is for the, putting gas on a city vehicle when we have a contract with a gas station that they can actually put gas in, in the city of Parlour instead of going to Reedley or going to Sanger and putting gas at those gas stations. So I think my, my thing would be, chief, is that you, you really need to get a hold of all of that, because we need to be more efficient, we need to be making sure that, that there is checks and balances in the department that I used to work for, in corrections. When you were on-call, you got compensated by a, you would get paid per day for being on-call, and then you would get paid the overtime when you would arrive at that location. So the thing that I'm concerned about is that now they're going to have the actual, and they didn't get the mileage, they, they would get the, the use of the vehicle plus the, the on-call pay and the overtime. And, and when I brought up this issue the last time, there was, there was a check for overtime and regular pay and on-call, and thank you for providing me that information, I requested that before. It shows on there $5,000 on just a two-week period. So I still have not seen the justification as to what was the purpose of that, that, that overtime. I asked for, if it was something that was being worked on, then you would have like the work order or something that reflects to the assignment that was done that day. Because the concerns that I get from residents is that there's water leaks, and it takes them three or four days to even try to finish the project. So if, are they working on them or not working on them? And then I think you actually explained a little bit to me that it was because of the, the cooling center. And if, if the cooling center was being utilized, it's only on the, in the, when it reaches the triple digits, once it cools off, then they don't need to be there. So I just want us to be more, you know, visual of what's happening, because this was, this used to happen back in, when I first came in, the abuse of the overtime, unnecessary overtime. And these are taxpayers' money. We want to make sure that we spend our money wisely and not on, on overtime that was unnecessary. And I'm not saying that it is, I'm just saying I have not seen anything that justifies a $5,000 check for an employee that, that worked 80 hours and, and claimed 29 hours on top of that in a two-week period. So just please, if you can do like, I know that the schools, I think, do this too, where they, do they, Sabrina, I think you're familiar with that, where they take the mileage, the gas.
We do it at the police department.
Yeah, oh, you do it then.
So we'll just adopt that form as well. I'll attach it to the policy.
I do that at the school too, because I drive a school vehicle.
You just simply log your miles and the gallons.
Everything.
Miles and gallons, and you sign and date it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, we have that logged, so I'll incorporate that.
And, and, I mean, just so that we can be mindful, because if you just give them the car, and here you go, and nobody's watching, people are going to do what they're going to do. But that's why we need to be more, I guess, more aware of what can happen and be on that. Before it happens, be proactive instead of reactive.
Yep.
So that's just my, my, my recommendation, and is anybody else that would like to say anything?
And I want to say he did provide us with the, the overtime that he.
But I asked for the backup.
Isn't that what you sent us?
The overtime sheets describe what the, the call-out is for. So it, it'll say water leak on there, and, and I did provide that sheet, and then the other, the other one says disking.
But it just, it's just been, okay. What I would like to see is that when you do it, and I've seen them before, when they do a, a water leak, there is documentation that proves to you what was that assignment. Not just writing it in, it was a water leak, because that used to happen when I first came in, water leaks all the time. And it's, and it's just written, there's nothing to support that. So there's got to be paper trail that backs up what they're claiming that they did, because this is where the abuse comes in.
Right, because it, when you get a call for service, it'll come in through
That would also.
the call services, and call services should, should have some log
Yes.
that indicates they did receive a call.
And expenses that were made, and what, what roads was it covered? Because the reason I'm saying is because I do have a resident that has said that for several weeks, there's barricades at a leak that's on near Mexico. It's been there for weeks, and no one's worked on it. So there's got to be a, a, an administrative process where you can actually make sure that this is really taking, because we get the calls.
Yeah.
We get the calls.
Sure.
We want you guys to make sure that you do your job, this way we don't get the calls. That way you take care of it at, at your level, instead of having to come to us, then we have to address you. You know, once you deal with all that, then you can, we, we won't have to.
Yeah, we can, we can create that regulation and create, it fosters transparency.
Yes.
So I think it's important that we have it, and I can add that as well.
Yeah.
We can add that to the policies.
So you could just add the, the log, the mileage log.
Mileage log and fuel log, as well as the backup for calls for service. It's a calls for service.
Fuel log, but we do the mileage log, the mileage out and the mileage back in.
It, it's like your officers, if something were to happen, you want to see the backup to support what they're claiming, correct?
We got dispatch, so dispatch, they record everything, it's, it's all.
And then they have the reports that also back up what they did that day.
So I'll have to look into that, and I'm sure they have, so those are simply tracking devices, they're tracking systems, they track everything, all calls, when you got there, when you left. So some of that is, is regulated.
Weekly reports, also, that's what we used to have before, is the weekly reports. That justifies everything there too, you do all those, it's weekly reports.
Actually, there's a, there's a, there's an app now that you can actually like login, and it tracks your location, so.
Trackers?
Not, no, it, it's, you can check in, like you check in and check out. So if they, you know, they get to, you know, the, the yard or the PD. Yeah, yeah, similar to that. But it's on and off.
That's what ADP is, the.
Could you look into?
Fingerprint, the lives, actually, it's, it's, you're, you're clocking.
Could you look into actually putting it on the vehicle itself?
For what, a tracker?
I think that was something that this last city manager was, was going to look into. Not this, but the previous one.
So GPS tracking, so our, our vehicles, our MDTs at the police department, we have tracking, an application on there, so wherever the officer, we can see where they're at, where they're going, how fast they're going. Those are GPS tracking applications. So we look into putting that.
Something to, a little, hold them a little more accountable.
Accountable, because when you, you know what, it's like kids, when you let them, you know, run loose, they're going to do whatever they can, as long as they can do it until they get caught. So this is why I say proactive instead of reactive, and so we can, if you can look into that this way, it eliminates any questionable things that are happening or might not be happening. And, because these are things that come to me.
I think we'll sleep better at night.
Yeah, well, they, people bring things to my attention, and that's why I think it's, it's why I'm trying to address it the best.
It'll eliminate the perception.
Yes.
Perception or, or actual, it could be actually happen, you don't know. That's why, that's why you want to put those precautions on there, so that it doesn't happen, right?
Yeah.
Because if, if you are, Kathy.
It'll minimize suspicions and.
Uh, this way, yes.
Perception, so, okay.
Is there any other questions? Any from the public? Okay. Go ahead, and then, and then you can go next.
The chief, the MDTs that are in the vehicles, do they stay in there 24/7?
Do they, pardon?
Are they in the vehicles 24/7, the MDTs?
No, 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 all, all equipment is supposed to be removed from the vehicle after your assignment. Generally, those vehicles are used 24/7 though, because one's, one shift logs off, the other one logs on.
Well, i- if they're taking them home.
Right.
There, is there?
And.
And would it be each office?
The officers that the, at the department do. Oh, Public Works.
The what?
You're talking about Public Works?
No, the PD.
That's what I thought. So.
We're talking, just to get back on track, I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda, it's the actual Public Works.
Oh, I thought it was the PD cars that we were going over.
He was actually making a, a.
Making a reference.
Uh-huh.
Oh, so it is about Public Works, not the police department vehicles?
No.
So Public Works would be taking them?
Yeah.
Home?
On-call.
You confused me. So it's not the PD one, I was.
So what happened was is that they always, whoever was on standby takes the vehicle home, so if we get a call, they can respond to the call.
Right, that makes sense.
But recently, it was taken away, and, and now we're just bringing it back, so we make it allowable, but with restrictions.
Yes.
And those are the ones you're asking to put tracking devices in, or was that the PD?
PD already has their own tracking device.
He gave the example.
Yeah, he was just an example.
So then you're wanting to put the tracking devices in the Public Works vehicles. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and also the gas mileage and all of that documentation. Okay. Humberto, go ahead.
I don't know what is going to be the number of people that are going to be taking the cars to home.
It's whoever's on call.
Or on a standby.
There's a standby person.
Right.
Yes.
Well, as long as I understand, that has a privilege also, you know, so, you see that they're violating that policy as, as, they don't understand that has a privilege, and you stake it away from them. That's simple.
It has happened before, it has happened a long time ago, that's why I'm asking for these restrictions, because there was an abuse of it. So if we're going to go back to taking home vehicles, there's got to be parameters, because if not, they're going to abuse it. You know, it's just like kids, like I said, you give them the, the leeway, and they're going to do whatever they can until they get caught.
No, I, I understand, and I really thank you for doing that, because this is the first time that we're spending some time, how should be spending our money, so thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
It should have been done a long time ago, Mr. Gomez, you're right.
It was done, that's why it was taken away. So now we can go ahead, is there anybody else from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
I motioned to approve with adding the log sheets for
Mileage?
mileage, and then somehow figuring out the gas on there, however you're going to do that with the gas, right?
Well, they're only supposed to use it from the, they're not going anywhere else, right? Because you're not going to let them, allow them to just use a credit card again, right?
But that would.
We have an open account at the ARCO here in town.
So they're, they know to only use that, so when they do that, they still put how many gallons they got. They, they go to the gas gauge, they see how many gallons, they put the date, they put the mileage, it's, it's, it's like that on, that's the way the Department of Corrections did it.
That's the way I do it too at work, but that's what I'm saying, I'm approving this with adding that to the, to the requirements.
Okay.
That's what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. Misunderstood, sounded like you were saying that it was not. Okay, so then, then with that.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Yeah, so I made my motion, and then to add the mileage.
Can I?
Yeah, you can add, I, I'll just, because I was the one who made the motion with all the other stuff.
Well, I have to open it up for motion, okay, please. Yes, so that's when I say, is there a motion? He did.
You did.
No, I.
You did say that.
And then, and then you just went and talked, so let me go, is there a motion? Again, let's start all over, please. Is there a motion, yes or no?
I motion again.
And I second it.
And adding with, with adding.
Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes, thank you. So, and now we can move on to the next item, which is consideration and necessary action agreement, and entering into a agreement with the independent contractor Neil Costanzo and Associates Professional Legal Services, presented by Acting City Manager David Serta. Serta?
Mayor, council members, residents of Parlour, the, the previous meeting, we had agreed to enter an agreement with independent contractor Neil Costanzo and Associates. This is a follow-up to that, so there's a recommendation to approve entering into a contractual agreement with independent contractor Neil Costanzo and Associates for representation in legal matters against the city. Independent contractor Neil Costanzo and Associates shall provide legal representation as attorney of record for city and the named employee of city, and all necessary legal services consultation and advice to city through its authorized representatives in connection with each of the foregoing actions identified in the recitals to this agreement, because Costanzo and Associates previously represented city in these legal matters and has intimate knowledge of such said matters, it is recommended that city enter an agreement with Costanza and Associates.
Yes, thank you for bringing that finally to us, because their trial starts on September 3rd. I'm not sure if, Megan, are you going to be working with Neil on that? Or how is this going to play out? Is your mic on too?
I'll, I'll be staying in touch with council, and I'd like to read into the record the two matters that you're, you're in agreement that he will handle only, and that's Jose Garza versus City of Parlour, case number 21CECG02953. And the second case is Juan Torres versus City of Parlour and Rosalia Solis, case number 22CECG00075. Those two cases only. And my role as your interim city attorney would be to be informed of the status of both of these matters And uh my role as your interim city attorney would be to be informed of the status of both of these matters as they progress to resolution. And so with your approval, that's what I would do, I would not spend time on either case, but I would be able to be informed of the status from um counsel Costanzo, uh so that the city always knows where this is at.
Okay.
If that's agreeable with you, that would be my role.
I think that is perfect.
Very limited.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from counsel?
Uh we need to let the community know also how much is that gonna cost us, now that he's just gonna work on it, did his rates go up, or how how is this happening?
Well, I can't tell you what the cost is, other than the hourly rates are within the litigation range of any attorney on these types of matters, and both cases, I'm informed, are at the end of 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 the litigation process, so the exposure to the city should be limited as far as out of pocket, but without looking at the files, I can't, I can't address that further, but be assured that um in the past, when I've acted as city attorney, that I monitor and question um the bills, and as they come in, I'm happy to look at them and make sure they're accurate, because I'm well aware of what litigation costs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and and keep in mind, we have two two attorneys, it's it's not, it's not their fault, it was it was, we shouldn't have been here to begin with, but that's where we are. Is there any other questions from the counsel? So, any from the public?
This, excuse me, this is a problem, you got rid of Mr. Costanzo, now you're gonna have two attorneys working on this.
Absolutely.
And again, who are we thinking of, are we thinking of this community? This community has to be paying taxes, and if we're gonna be paying two attorneys just because people wanna have their own attorney at their site, I think that's ridiculous. You know, Mr. Costanzo has been on this for, and 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 there's no bearing on you, ma'am, uh there's nothing.
No, and I I don't take it that way.
The thing is that we keep going right back to the same mistakes all the time, we gave up millions of dollars through the, through uh through, to the uh medical marijuana, we get, we're giving them free water, we're doing all that, now we're paying two attorneys because people wanna wanna have their own attorney? I I I just can't understand this counsel, they're supposed to be there for this community, that's what the community puts you there for, to do what's right for this community, not what's right for you guys. You know, uh you know, I appreciate you guys running for these positions, but when you run, you you put up an oath, and the oath is that you're gonna provide for the community that's putting you there. The the voters of this community expect you to do that, they expect you to do the right thing for the community, not not for yourselves. Again, here we got, we're gonna be paying two attorneys for something that Mr. Costanzo already had been working on for a while. You know, that that's appalling to me, because we're all taxpayers, and a lot of us, a lot of us are are on fixed incomes. You know, the water thing's gonna come up pretty soon, we're gonna pay another twelve percent, yet somebody who is making millions of dollars is getting it for free, and we're doing the same thing again. Ma'am, I'm sorry, I know I went a little bit out of line, but you know what, this this has got to stop, and the community has to see what's going on up there. You guys are not thinking, you're not doing what's right for the community, and that is appalling to, at least to me it is, and I'm sure there's a lot of people up there that are looking and saying, what's going on? But the thing is that nobody says nothing, everybody keeps quiet because nobody wants to make noise, well, I'm tired of sitting back there and listening to all this, this is ridiculous, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, may I just reassure um this gentleman that two attorneys are not gonna be working on this case, I am not working on this case.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think he meant. Thank you, no. He didn't mean it that way, he's saying that.
Yeah, he did.
But 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 let me finish, please.
What did you mean, can you, for clarity, cuz did you mean that they're working on the same case?
We got two attorneys, you might not be working, but you're gonna be being uh uh, you you just mentioned something about you're gonna be charging on an hourly rate.
No, yes, I am, but not on this matter, I'm not responsible for these two cases.
Okay, maybe, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, I I wanted to clarify it because you remind me of my family member, and I love your point of view, because I would say the same thing, if, but I know, I'm not responsible for these two cases.
Okay, then I apologize to her.
Let me just clarify it, for clarification, she is the interim city attorney, she's just gonna make sure that the information that we get from Costanzo is here, she is getting paid for the role she's doing. Costanzo's, Costanzo's gonna get paid, Costanzo's gonna get paid to represent the city for the legal matters that are in place.
Okay, mayor.
But there's, yes, there is two attorneys that we're paying for two different issues, but yes, we are paying for two attorneys, just two different things.
That's what I'm trying to say, is here we are paying two attorneys, when we have one attorney that was very competent, very uh uh capable of doing what what he does, thirty-eight years of experience, and he's out the door because somebody wants another attorney to represent him, thank you.
Okay, all right, uh we, it's for the public, I I already opened it for the public, so it's um.
Oh, I'm next.
No, it's for the public, I already gave the opportunity to the um, I already forgot what it was.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, I I agree with Trino, uh it makes absolutely no sense to not have Neil continue on those two cases, because he has been there from day one.
He is continuing.
Then why, what what were you talking about when you said about him getting paid, what's he gonna get paid, what does that have to do with it, because he was already on the case?
He's on the case getting paid. I think, I think her her statement was that, how much was he getting paid, she asked the question to uh Megan, how much was he getting paid? Not that he wasn't gonna get paid, or it's just how much, which she stated, it's it's fair what he's um getting paid, that that was the comment.
So as far as paying for.
For to to represent the city on those two cases, that would solely be Neil?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Yes, it's, as I stated earlier, yes, there is two attorneys, one is representing the city as the interim uh uh city attorney, and the other one is uh representing us for the legal uh matters that are in court. So it's for entering, this is to enter into an agreement with independent contractor Neil Costanzo.
For those two cases, yes.
Right, my point is that it would be asinine not to do so, I'm just giving you my my opinion, it. To approve it, yes.
Yes, oh yes, that's why it it's on.
I mean, nothing surprises me anymore, so.
Represent us, I've been mentioning how much importance it was for him to represent the city since he was handling the whole entire case.
Right.
As she stated, she would not be able to give us any information, because she has not seen the case, she doesn't know exactly what's going on, because she doesn't have the information that she needs. Okay, I was just worried it was gonna go the other way and that would be crazy.
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions from the public, go ahead.
I'm gonna agree with Trino also, but it's gonna be backwards, we haven't signed the agreement with Neil, right? Don't sign it, don't sign the agreement, we don't need him, he's a very good attorney, I like him, I like his style, if I'm gonna be paying for him, okay? Because he let me go my way, he let me go as far as I can go, that's his style, but I I agree that you don't have to pay two attorneys, you know? Get rid of Neil, one hundred percent, you know, because the mayor created a problem, she's the one that fired the chief. But now, we had, we had afraid that uh we're gonna end up paying four hundred, four hundred, four million dollars, and before, nobody will tell us what was what we're gonna pay. You guys never give us a name, you guys never give us a uh a number, and now the public is knowing about Juan Torres and the chief. I mean, come on, you guys, you don't, you don't need to to hit Neil on this one, I'm I'm positive that she is very capable on handling the whole situation, so my recommendation is, don't sign the the agreement with with Neil, let her do the representation.
Megan, um I know, I think you could speak on that, because to our understanding, the 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 judge was not gonna allow Costanzo to be out of the case anyways, so we.
Still have to pay him.
Yeah, you still have to pay him, I, it's not, I'm not talking about that, but I'm just explaining to Mr. Umberto that we're gonna have to have him, because the judge is not gonna allow him to be off the case.
That.
I don't, Megan could.
For clarification, it's not that the the judge will not allow him, if if Neil chooses not to represent him, he can actually not represent, cuz we terminated him. So so the thing is that Neil can still represent us, he doesn't, he's not, has to be forced to do it, he has, he has, we have the, we should go with him because of the fact that he's the one that's handled the whole case, not anybody else, in Megan's defense, she will not be able to defend us, because she doesn't, we're in, in September, September third is the trial, that's when it starts. So if we wait and bring uh Megan in to try to defend us, you really think she's gonna be able to successfully do that? She can work miracles, Megan, go ahead and address it, I'm not getting anyone anywhere.
Is that true that the judge is not going to allow you? Not do allow.
I, I understand, and with all due respect, I know it's very, it it's very um, con- eh not confusing, but challenging, because the timeframe is so short, I cannot prepare adequately, and and do the best job for the city of Parlier, nor would I agree to move forward with a trial date of the third of September. The advice has been asked of the other attorney from Lieber Cassidy and myself as to how to proceed, the best strategy to be in a good position for the city of Parlier, and I agreed with the other lawyer, that as long as your counsel is comfortable with Neil Costanzo representing them and resolving the case, one way or the other, through trial or through settlement, and the second case, because the the attorney on the other side represents the same um plaintiffs, then I felt comfortable with that, it was in the best interest of Parlier to do that, because of the short timeframe. Um and and yes, I am capable, and I've done many trials. I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that, I've not seen the file, and I've just come on as the interim city attorney.
The the continu- uh continuance was already requested, and the and the judge stated that he will only allow the last uh continuance, so he said that will be the last and final, that September third, everybody needs to be prepared, the, well, that's coming from the judge, and that's what he said, and we have to go through what what the judge says, we cannot just make our own rules.
So so with all due respect, sir, I I um, it it has nothing to do with my being capable or not capable, but in the best interests of the city, based on my evaluation and the other evaluation from the other attorney, I have to concur that because of the short timeframe and what's at stake, that this contract should be signed, but no further contracts as far as litigation goes. And I'm very mindful of every dollar that a city or a public agency spends on lawyers, in fact, I've been doing it for a very long time, and many of the times, I don't bill for all of my time, because uh because I'm I'm available and I'm responsive, and it's not necessary. But in this particular case, I concur with signing this agreement.
Okay, thank you, Megan, is there any other questions from the public?
Can I, you said something like that, mayor?
Uh, she's the expert, as you know, I'm a poor little farm worker myself, you know, so, but I still believe that you don't, you don't need uh Costanzo. You guys haven't signed the agreement, don't sign the agreement, unless we are sure that is, are we gonna settle, mayor, in the next, on the next meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Are we gonna settle with Juan Torres and also with the Chief Garza?
Thank you.
Are we are going to settle, that's my question.
We don't know, cuz.
So then why we want Costanzo to do it?
Okay, thank you for your comment, but at the end of the day, we take the recommendation of legal counsel, you can have your opinions, that's that's great. But at the end, it's based on what legal counsel uh recommends, so at this moment, is there anybody else that would like to address the counsel? And if not, then do I have a motion to approve um the contract with Neil Costanzo? Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I, motion by Sabrina, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Uh Diego, all those in favor? All those in favor? Motion, can you do a roll call, please, cuz I I'm not getting an answer from that side? Yes.
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 No.
So four yes and one no, which tells you again. Anyway, so we can move on to the uh next item, and that is item number E eleven, and that is Jeff O'Neil, can you?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, members of city council. Uh, we have an item before you tonight from Unwired Broadband, uh they've done a couple of presentations about installing the citywide fiber optic network, uh providing a lower cost, high-speed internet throughout the city, uh and we have a resolution on the agenda that directs the acting city manager to enter into a lease agreement uh with Unwired for a portion of the property at City Hall to install facilities, uh as well as a uh citywide master encroachment permit, uh which will increase the efficiency, so that they will not have to apply for encroachment permits anytime they want to start service, they'll simply notify the city and notify residents ahead of time uh under this master uh agreement, and that's it.
I have a question, though, because it, I think. Okay, um so, with which is services for the community, correct?
Right.
It's services for the um for the internet?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been brought up that the the rates, um do we have any idea what that may look like? Is it something that is affordable for the city of Parlier, um keep in mind, this is a, I'm not saying you have to do lower than everybody else, but um something that that is is worth bringing to the city that's affordable?
It is affordable, and we have tiered plans.
Excuse me, please identify yourself, would you?
My name is John Stephen, I work with Unwired, I'm the engineering manager for Unwired, um we do have tiered plans available, our one gig service starts at ninety-nine dollars a month, um and it is a symmetrical one gig, meaning it's up and download at one gig, which is a thousand megabits. I think currently, most plans available are a hundred over twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Basically, it it, does that sound about right?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody else could confirm it.
Yes, yes.
And so we can do, like our our five hundred, over five hundred plan, would compete very close with the current um speeds that the city has.
Okay.
So you'd be getting five times the speed, basically, for the same price.
Oh.
Currently, and if you do want the full gig service, then it bumps up to the ninety-nine a month.
Okay, yeah, that's that's where I wanted a little bit more clarification, cuz I did hear, and you're right, is the one that that I I use, it is about a hundred and twenty, and um so it it's comparable, and it's pretty better deal, you know, um I know that that sounds good to us, so I know that the community will like that, and and this is for the entire city, as you presented the last time, correct?
It's for the entire city, um we do also offer bu- business plans, they're a little bit more, they're about two fifty-nine a month, but that's with everybody else as well.
Okay.
Installation for the home is free, so.
Okay.
It's, it's a good deal for all the community.
I think it's a good thing, because I know Partners always had that problem of getting any other service to come to Parlier, because there was no, there was no um, like the connections were not there, I think, they only did it for the new homes, first, and that's only one, one, one actually um that you could subscribe to, it's one internet service.
We do have a competitor in the northwest side of town, um I don't mention their names.
I know, yeah.
We do have a competitor on the northwest side of town, and they do have fiber to the homes in that area, but it's only in that area within the city.
That's what I remember, that's why I didn't want to mention names either, but yes, so this will be also available to the areas that are older uh sections of the city that don't have that opportunity, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, is there any questions?
And you just, you just put in for the school, schools as well, correct?
A one more.
For the school district, it went, it was citywide.
We can do that as well, yes, we are definitely interested in doing that.
Yeah, cuz I think it's for, you started with City Hall.
Starting with City Hall, and then hopefully expand out from there as far as the schools. Those are definitely areas that we're interested in. Um, I think part of the agreement was to also deliver a one gig service to PD.
Oh, to the PD, that's right. Mm-hmm.
That's, at the very least, it's a backup.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Is there any questions?
I have one question. You, you mentioned that, uh, homes will be, the installation will be free?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much would the monthly payment be?
A full one gig service is ninety-nine dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
So it, it depends on the plan they pick, right?
And, and it is, there are other plans available.
Right.
Do they go ch, uh, cheaper or higher?
They go less.
Less?
A lot, a lot.
Excuse me, can I finish what I'm? Uh, did you, I didn't hear you. Did you say that it goes less or higher?
The one gig service is ninety-nine a month, but we do have lower tiered plans available as well.
Okay, I just wanted the people on.
Yeah.
Livestream to hear.
No, as the gentleman said, I, I realize that a lot of the community is on fixed incomes, so there are plans that are, are more in line with perhaps his needs.
So what's the lowest, uh, um, plan that you have? Because you said the one gig is, is ninety-nine, kind of like an example, and I know that you can't really say specifically, but at least kind of, uh, an estimate to, so the public can know exactly what you're offering.
I really don't know what our lowest plan is. I apologize for that. I'm not in sales, I'm in engineering, so.
That I would have to beat him.
I can tell you how to build it.
I could tell you how to build it.
But we do have a website available.
I, I think it's important for us to know, if, if you could send us that information, because I, yeah, we would like to post it so that the public knows, because to them, it's always gonna be about if it's affordable, you know?
Absolutely.
You know, because it's great that you can build it, but can we afford it?
And those, and even for those with, um, gamers, they're gonna wanna know, you know?
Yeah.
What, what's the plan?
I, I think the gamers are going to be very happy.
Oh, I know, because I, I had one at home, so that's why, uh, I, every time I'd see the bill, I was like, are you kidding me? You know, but, um, but thank you. I'm glad for that presentation you did the last time and bringing it here to us to finally get, you know, moving it forward. So I don't have any other questions. Is there any other questions from council?
So are you gonna go, like, home to home once you guys start with this?
Uh, we, during construction, we will go every street in front of every house, and we will have an access point basically placed at every other property line, so that then as, as customers sign up, we won't build to the house until a customer signs up and orders service. It's a little bit less disruptive that way, but we will go through with our backbone or trunk lines, if you will, first. We will, we'll build those throughout the entire city, leaving those access points, and then if you call for service and we get your address, then we'll have another crew come out and we'll actually build from that access point up to your house.
House.
To get everything tied in.
Yeah, that's good. Um, I'm glad that at least we'll have the second option, so thank you. Uh, any comments from, um, the public? Okay, hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion from, Diego, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a, uh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some thank you.
So item number twelve. Javier?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, when we bid out Fig Tree Park, um, it, the bids came in over, over budget, so uh, what I did, I started taking things out away from the contractor to try to fit the project into budget, and then said, I'm looking for ways to be, get a competitive bid to beat those, those costs. So this is part of, one of the things I took out of his, his budget was, uh, instead of him procuring the benches, um, and adding his cost to it, we're procuring the benches ourselves, uh, going straight and, and saving that money for, so we can meet the budget. So tonight, uh, just as suggestions for the approval for the benches for Fig Tree Park.
And when would that, um, like ribbon cutting? Because I would make, I want to make sure that, uh, Trina Dad and Diane Maldonado are present, since they were the ones that actually approved this project back then, so they, I really want to make sure that they're present. When would that be, um?
Yeah, we, we'll be complete by the end of September.
End of September?
Mm-hmm.
So now you know Trino. Okay, so, um, you know, um, well, Sabrina's gonna be there. Um, so then, uh, by September, and this is the, the end stage of the, like, you're gonna put, I would like to see, I hope, I wish you would have brought, oh, the fig tree, the fig tree. We were supposed.
It's, I'm working on the tree. Uh, it's, it's not easy, because I, we, I need a meeting with Arborist to make sure that it's not damaged in the process, so, uh, they're checking the soil conditions, matching the acidity of the soil, I mean, it's a whole thing, to just make sure it doesn't die in the transportation process. So I'm working on it.
So that you don't disturb it and it dies?
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, well, yeah, what happened? Yeah, because, um, they need to make, we need to make sure they're a part of it as well, you know? Um, because a lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of the people don't know the story of the fig tree. I ran into some community members where they didn't know that this tree was the world's largest fig tree, and it was here in Parler, and it was, it, it fit three hundred people under that tree. Then it kept growing until it finally got top-heavy and it tipped over, and, um, there's actually an article, and there's even a report from AJ, uh, Fox, he did a story about it.
Twenty-six.
And so I think that P, having something there that's like a plaque on the story of the tree would be important to have as well, because a lot of people don't know that story. You know, they don't, they don't know that, that's why there's a fig tree on our logo, because back then, when we were talking about changing the logo, um, we didn't, we kept the old logo, but it put the, the, the tree in there, because nobody knew, knew the, the, the story behind that and how it was, um, I N. Parler who planted that tree. So I'm glad that the Parlers are donating that tree for the Fig Tree Park. Somebody did ask me and say, was it there, the fig tree? No, it was, no, it was, it's actually.
I N. Fresno Street.
I N. Fresno Street. So, but thank you, um.
Yeah, the plaque is already part of the plans, so, yeah.
So good, thank you, because I want to make sure that, it, the story of the fig tree?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, is there any other questions from the public? Okay.
Uh, thank you for, uh, moving forward on this. Uh, it's, it's a great pleasure for me that we were able to put, uh, that park there, and the reason we, we really thought about that park was because of the, the seniors across the street. I used to go by there every day, and they were s- sitting in the sidewalk, talking whether it was hot, cold, and I think this park is gonna be very instrumental, very instrumental. And then being able to go sit down, have a place to sit under the shade, or, they're even gonna have, are they gonna have those barbecuers in there?
I, I think not with this phase. I think we, we would purchase it later ourselves.
Well, anyway, they'll, they'll have a place to go sit and, and, and enjoy themselves, instead of sitting in the middle of the street. So, you don't know how long I would go by there. Sonia, when are you guys gonna start? When are you guys gonna start? Well, now it's started, and I'm glad that we're gonna be moving forward. It, that, that's.
Finish at September.
Uh, I am very, very, very happy that that's gonna be fin, completed pretty soon. Thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina, second by, um, Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, um.
Fourteen.
This is, uh, Grant. Okay, uh, number fourteen, and that is, Serta?
Excuse me, um, Ms. Mayor, before you go any further, I was just handed a designation on number nine, that the resolution number is twenty twenty-four dash forty-three A is an apple. So if you could mark that.
Um, Dorothy, did you get that?
What number?
And would that be, uh, Ms. Garza? So on item number nine, twenty twenty-four dash forty-three A is the designation of the resolution.
Yeah, so, so I signed it already, so then that needs to.
That's fine. That's fine.
Is that the one I signed too?
It should just be noted as it's forty-three A.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that he doesn't get the, what, is it the one I signed?
No, it's the vehicle policy.
It has to do with the vehicle policy.
No, the one that I handed you earlier.
Thank you.
Which one was? Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that not the wrong one goes in. Okay.
Hold, hold on. The vehicle one was number eleven, right?
Nine was the right.
Eleven was the Unwired.
Oh, yes, sorry. So that, what would be?
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-four dash forty-three A for number nine. Thank you.
Excuse me, number eight was what? Forty-three A?
Twenty twenty-four forty-three A.
Wait, let, let her ask the questions, please.
It, it doesn't have it on there, Dorothy? It's not on the agenda part, it's on the, behind the, the staff report.
Mm-hmm.
So it's twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four dash four-three A for number nine.
Put it on number nine. Twenty twenty-four forty-three dash.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. Oh, okay, okay. And, and number, item number A is just twenty twenty-four forty-three?
Correct. Correct.
Maybe you should just double-check with Berta later. I, I, it's all over the place now, I don't know.
Yes, eight is forty-three, and number nine is forty-three A. Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
So maybe Chief for Future, can we get the resolutions, um, already? This is the way I've done it in the other board, where they have it already written with the numbers on there that they verified, that they're the correct numbers. So this way, when I, they, we're done and everything passes, then I, I sign on them right then and there, they're put away, because this needs to kind of, this pattern needs to kind of like stop, because it, it, it creates a, um, a problem with the, the actual number, because we start with one and they go on forward after that. So if we miss something, then we go back to the other number, and then it just creates a little bit of a mess. So, could you please?
Sure.
Thank you. Just kind of like the, what you guys did with the, um, Measure C, um, that, that Javier did? So if you can kind of follow that model and just get that done, please, thank you. So now, um, back to where, did we approve it?
For thirteen?
Fourteen.
Why, why not thirteen? What happens?
Well, we, it got tabled. September fifth.
Okay, that's the one that was tabled.
So, so then I didn't get to write it down, so who motioned for, uh, for day, uh, number fourteen?
No, fourteen we haven't done yet.
Well, that's what, they told me that it was done.
No, thirteen.
Thirteen, we tabled, so there is no action on that one. So number fourteen, okay. Jeez, that's what, like, what? Someone went ahead of me. So go ahead and, uh, address that, uh, number fourteen, Chief.
Mayor, council members, residents of Parler, uh, before you, you have the authorization to execute a grant agreement for participation in Proposition sixty-four Public Health and Safety Grant Program, which is a BSCC grant. I've brought this, we brought this before you. Uh, there are a couple of other things we're finalizing. One of them is simply that we need this, this approval from the council to execute the agreement, giving the authority for the city manager and the, the acting city manager and assistant city manager to act in that capacity in executing this agreement. We're asking the council's approval to go forward with that. There's a lot of background in there, but I, I think this, that we've.
Yeah.
If you want more information, I can give it to you.
We, we do that all the time, so it's, I don't have no questions.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Any from the public?
Westside, I want with a grant.
It, this is not the, an aga, a grant amount, it's just to authorize acting city manager and assistant city manager to sign. So do I have a motion to, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four forty-seven?
Motion.
Sabrina, do I have a second?
Aye.
Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five yes. Okay. All right, so now we go on to, um, brief council comments. Um, we can start with Chief.
Yes, I wanted to, uh, report some updates. So at, at, uh, the police department, uh, remodeling, we had our security fences up and the gates, the electronic gates, so all the officers and non-sworn and sworn now have remote controls. They can remote control in and out of the parking lot. The back parking lot is employee parking only exclusively. The front parking lot is all public parking, but if you drive by there, you'll notice the really nice and sophisticated, uh, electronic gates, and they're iron rod gates that are, uh, protecting, uh, the staff there from driving in and out. It, it really looks good. I just wanted to report that that is completed, and we are expecting the remodeling of the PD roof to start in mid-September. Uh, the roofing company is simply waiting for supply. Supplies are on back orders, so that should start soon, and they anticipate completing that project once the material comes in, uh, within thirty to forty-five days. So they're really gonna work fast on that, and then we can work on the, the next phases with the, the new lobby. Um, I do want to, uh, uh, thank Public Works for being proactive. They went out and painted all of the crosswalks at all of the intersections around all the schools, that knowing that school was, uh, was gonna start, uh, they, they really did a good job, and it really shows, and it, it really just improves and enhances the safety for, uh, our students and, and our youth. As I mentioned earlier, there's, uh, we did post recruitment flyer for a part-time position for Public Works to help us out and cut back on overtime. It's a part-time position, it is on the website, and, and it'll close, and it's open until filled. Um, the other thing is, uh, our, there's, there's an initiative here that I, I want to bring forward probably at the next council meeting to create an, an oversight committee for the Academy of Excellence, the daycare, and so I'll be talking to the council about adopting that resolution and, uh, asking for your input on that.
Would that have, um, like, what would that entail? Because if I can't get documents.
Well, that's exactly, it's, it's kind of like the, uh, the, uh, the Oversight, Measure Q Oversight Committee with the police department overseeing the finances. It's, it's a similar description, so I'm gonna put together, uh, a scope of work and a description and details, and, and it's something that's not, we're, we're not reinventing the will. These are things that other cities do as well, and it's just regulation, so it's, I.
I, I haven't heard of that in other cities with the Department of Education, but I think that, I think the main focus, Chief, and I, and, and I've been saying this for six months, the concern is, again, we get one point five million. The attendance is not there. Instead of putting oversight on what's being spent, because we know it's, it being, all the money's being spent, but how are you spending almost a one point three million and not have all the kids necessary? I think the focus should be is recruitment for the kids, because it's in jeopardy after twenty twenty-five, that we might lose that contract. So it's great that you want to have an oversight, but if you don't have it for too long, what's the oversight gonna be on?
Right. I agree. And, uh, we can look into promoting, uh, the recruitment and.
I think that's the priority.
As well.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just my recommendation, because if you're gonna have that, and then, um, and if you're gonna have that and not have the kids, then.
Yeah, it's, it defeats a purpose, I understand.[1685.23]
Yes. That's just my requirement, recommendation to you, if you could look into that first.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you want to see it at the next meeting, right?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to try and create that by the next meeting and maybe it's something that, uh, you guys, well, I'll bring it up for your consideration. Just give you an idea what it looks like, but in the meanwhile.
With the actual plan of what your plan is going to be, because you're the city, acting city manager that's overseeing that program. You know, and, and if there's only twenty kids, then, you know, what are we really doing for the community? Orange Cove has over a hundred kids.
Yeah, maybe we can do some more advertising, promoting.
No, I think there's got, they've been saying they've been doing that.
Yeah. I'll look into what other initiatives we can do and expand that.
Just something.
Committee would still be nice to.
No, I'm not saying anything about the committee, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that why have a committee if it's not going to be there next year?
We don't know that.
Uh, council members, let's move on, shall we?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm saying because you do have it until twenty twenty-five. So, okay, next.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to thank Javier again and all the people that have worked on these projects that we have throughout the city. I know it's kind of get hectic and the traffic and everything, but I think our residents are pretty good people and they understand that, that the only way we can do it is by their participation and it's kind of uncomfortable, but they're trying to get it done. And hopefully it'll get done in time faster. I mean, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you so much. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Lidos de los Vias from Parlear and Cross City Christians Church from Fresno for the backpack giveaway event. It was a gr- it was a true blessing for the families of our community. Food and games were provided as children had their bikes repaired if needed. Then children received a new backpack from these two organizations to start their new school year. Off to a good start. Thank you again. Uh, it was really, really nice to see the children were so happy and they were so excited. Getting new tires, they got their handles fixed and they're like, I want to drive my bike home. So they, it was so nice, really nice and the community. And, um, I was told that last year, I think they helped with our Christmas event or the year before. I'm not sure if it was last year, the year before they helped with the Christmas event. Well, they were asked to help, but we did not tell them until it was kind of late. So I think we need to kind of, uh, let these organizations know what we're doing in our events so they can come out. Cause there's so many organizations that are, are here and are helping our children, especially going back to school. So I just want to give another big shout out to these organizations that did provide this back-to-school event. It was really nice. Thank you so much.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Public Works, um, for going out there and again, like Chief said, painting, uh, repainting the lines for crosswalks and, um, around the school areas. I saw them out early in the morning. And then, uh, it was kind of mind-blowing just how they did it. I don't know, I, I've seen it done, but I was like, wow, that looks pretty neat. Um, but again, thank you, and that's for the safety of our kids, our parents walking their kids to school. It's pretty hectic in town and I've gotten a lot of calls, I don't know if Mayor has to, because she's in my area too. But, um, it, it's, it's inconvenience, but you know what? We really needed it in our community, um, just to kind of help out with that flooding that we've experienced. Of course, when we get overly, uh, amounts of water, um, dropped down on us. But, um, again, thank you, um, for the pro- getting the project going. It's coming down K Street slowly but surely. I get woken up at six o'clock in the morning every day with all the noise, but you know, that, that's my alarm clock right now. But again, thank you, um, and again, thank the community for just being patient. Um, we're trying to get a lot of projects done around the community and, um, from actually from like, you know, Zetecor to Academy. And, um, it, it's, it's just taking, having a lot of patience. School has started, you know, our kids are back in school. Kids are walking up and down the main roads right here, but just, uh, again, asking the community to please watch out for the kids going to school. Um, this morning, there was almost an accident here, so just please be mindful of the kids crossing the streets. Again, thank you to the, um, those organizations who did the backpack giveaway. A lot of happy faces, pictures that were taken. The football team who volunteered and, you know, had an experience of, for themselves of giving back to the community and, um, watching little, their, you know, community members, the little kids, their faces all light up when they got a new backpack. Some of our older kids don't get to see that. So when you provide opportunities for community, um, service opportunities, that's just one of them that, you know, our kids should be, um, be, be involved with. Again, thank you, um, to our city staff and I look forward to, you know, bigger and brighter things coming for our community in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, um, to Parler Unified, um, and the students there, welcome back, bless you. Welcome back, they're here, um, like Sabrina said, drive safe, uh, walk slow or fast, but drive slow. Look out for everyone. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Public Works as well, like they said as well, um, for painting all the sidewalks, the crosswalks, whatever they needed to do. Thank you to the PD, um, for being, uh, visible. I've been seeing them around a lot everywhere I go, I see them. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, uh, I, I want to say it's a good thing. Also, I want to thank all our staff. I do appreciate you guys with everything you guys do, keeping the city afloat. Jeff and Javier, same thing, appreciate both of you guys. I know you guys go through a lot and have to do for a lot, but does, everybody's liking the way the city's coming out. Also, just to clarify on the water rates, um, those were approved in twenty twenty-one, for the increases to happen, so it's not just now, it's been going on. So I just wanted to clarify on that. And then I also wanted to see if Jeff, um, if you could look into, uh, the Parlear municipal code for eighteen point four eight point two oh. Maybe updating it, because I believe they're very old and that's also for eighteen point one four point zero nine, which I believe is the height of that code or something like that. I don't know if there's some way.
Relating to accessory buildings?
Something like that, yeah. I know they're very old when I was going through the ordinances and permissible codes. Maybe we could look into that and bring it back to the next meeting. I don't know how, is this when I ask if it could be on the next meeting, council comments?
If, yeah, um, well, I was going to say that if you, what we could bring back at the next meeting would be a resolution of the council to initiate a text amendment? If that's what you're looking for?
That's what we need to do, then that's what we need to do.
Very well.
Could you send the staff report to us so we can know exactly what you're going to be presenting?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I mean, just so that we don't sit here the day of and try to figure out.
It'll, I will, when I bring the resolution at the next meeting that tells me to do something, that, that staff report will have alternatives and you can direct me at that point to make changes.
Could you get it to,
I'm not going to bring you a, well, I'm not going to bring you a surprise ordinance.
No, no, well, you give it to us when, uh, like maybe right before the meeting, uh, maybe two days before, but is it, is it okay to ask for you to have that in advance? Because sometimes what happens with these, these projects that we get and we've had this discussion before, we, we don't get the backup in advance for us to really be prepared in case we do have questions.
I will discuss that with the city attorney. And I don't know that I can give the council materials in advance of when the public receives them, so.
Well, Summer does it. So that's why I don't understand how we can't get information ahead of time.
We will get you the information as early as we can.
Thank you. And then, um, my last.
And I'm not trying to be dismissive.
Okay, that's fine, Jeff. Thank you.
And.
I will work with you on that and we've talked a little bit about updating some of those, but I, I think point well-taken, Mayor, that you just want to know, when, what's coming and, and I'm impressed with your city planner that he's doing a good job, so, thank you.
It's not about not him doing his job, it's just for us to get informed in time.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my last one is, um, I know Megan, um, brought this up before, um, if we can try to get involved with Sabrina and having a student council member, um, maybe bringing that up. Because, you know, city governance is important, especially to our town, and I believe maybe one of the high schoolers is, has an interest in that. So I would like to bring that up for the next council meeting as a discussion or something that we can, um, talk about. Cause I really think, I know the school district has a student, a school board, student school board member, so I would like that for here too. That's it for me.
Well, that's a, that's a great idea and you can, um, you've requested to put it on the agenda, so, um, maybe council member Rodriguez can help with that since you work with the schools, but that is a wonderful opportunity for a high schooler too. Plus they bring a different perspective to the city and whenever there's a need for bringing young people together, that's a great link to your local high school. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank also the Public Works, they did an outstanding job, Javier, thank you guys. Javier and Chief, I'm sorry I keep pushing you guys about the gates for the PD, but look, it's done, which is good for the safety of the officers. That was fantastic. About the overtime, well, we came to a conclusion that we already put it on the, on the website, that we're going to hire another custodian part-time. So that's going to help the overtime right there, so there won't be so many issues or problems on that one. And, uh, sorry to say, I know we're always being badgered about Greenbrier, but nothing's being said about the lawsuit we're getting right now with Alma and her prior council members. Minus Sabrina and I, who are, no. Well, anyway, I'm bringing it out so the community could know. And the other thing is that I'm very happy for the church that gave the backpacks and all that. It wasn't the city, I got asked if it was the city and I said, no, it was just the church. That's it.
And others.
Excuse me. So anyway, all that activity that happened there was on behalf of the two churches giving the backpacks, that's it. So anyway, let's keep moving forward, doing what we got to do and that's all I got to say.
Go ahead, Dorky.
I just want to make it clear that, that no one has told me to put down things on the minutes. The only people that I have talked to about that was the city manager and the city attorney. They advised me and they leave it that up to me. But, uh, no one has told me what to put on the minutes. And, um, I just want to say that.
Get accused a lot by council. I'm sorry.
That, uh, was put on the minutes for June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. I had done some research and based on that, that's why I put what I put.
Thank you.
But nobody told me to put it. I didn't seek anyone's advice. I just looked it up, I researched it. So, uh, with that note, um, I just want to leave it at that. Thank you, Diego, for, uh, telling me that one day that, uh, you didn't care what anybody said, I was doing a good job. Thank you, Trino, for standing up for me. And, um, I didn't tell Trino about it, I didn't tell him to come up here or anything, he did that on his own just to make things clear. Okay? And with that, I thank you for your time.
Michelle?
Yeah, so, um, there was a city Parlear dog that gave birth at the cold storage and, um, she was found with a severe, um, injury to her eye. Her whole eye needs to come out. I know the city don't have funds for this to pay for such a, it's going to be a great expense. So I found a rescue and organ who is going to pay for it.
That's great.
Donations came in for the mama out there and, um, Sunday afternoon, I'm going to be transporting her to Modesto. She's going to catch her ride the rest of the way.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Thank you for your, your, all your services.
No cost to the city.
You do a lot for the community. Thank you so much, uh, Michelle, because you, uh, you've been very instrumental for the city of Parlear. Javier?
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate the praise for the projects, but there's like a giant team behind me, so, uh, it's, uh, and it's not necessary. We're just doing our job, but, um, yeah, so just, we have a project in downtown with our flooding project. It's been very difficult, uh, we have sandy soil, which is great in Parlear for groundwater and for, for many things, but, um, it's very hard to dig in sandy soil. So if you see a giant crater, it's because it's eroding into the, into the, um, in, into the trench as we're trying to build this pipeline in. So it adds level difficulty, but definitely, uh, for the public especially, stay away from those trenches. We have it all fenced in. But the, the trench may look like it's standing up just fine, but it's actually eroding slowly overnight. Sometimes as the, just like you build, when you build sand castles, um, if, if the sand is wet, it, it, it's staying up, but maybe over, throughout the day or afternoon, it starts drying out and it all falls down, so, um, it's just dangerous soil. We fence it in and put caution tape, but still some people sometimes jump it, so it's just a public advisory that they could cave in and just stay away from the job site. And we're trying to get through that section as soon as possible. We are pretty deep, uh, we're about eighteen feet deep and then we're going to start climbing up and being less than five foot deep. So, yeah, we are installing a four-foot diameter pipe. I mean, some people could kayak through the whole thing, but that's going to protect our city. It's a really good project for the city and so we're just really looking forward to move that along. And, uh, we have other projects going on, but I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. We were intending to do a brief presentation on the focused general plan amendments that we're doing, uh, related to some land use issues and the city's sphere of influence. Uh, but due to the packed agenda, we're moving that to the September fifth meeting. Uh, also, a couple of weeks ago, we resubmitted the city's six-cycle housing element to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, and we're going to check in next week to see what the status of that is. Should be the final review, after which the city can take action to, uh, adopt the housing element, so I'll keep you informed.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, I just want to ask you if you can possibly bring that, uh, item that we had discussed about the, the, uh, parameters you're going to work on to put for the Public Works for the use of the vehicles? So that way you can kind of bring it, put it on the agenda for us to, uh, inform us exactly what you implemented or what you're going to implement? For, for the September fifth?
The, the policies?
No, the ones for the, uh, use of the take-home vehicles that we just had a discussion about.
They were attached to the?
No, no, because this was asked to add on the tracking, the logs.
Yeah, the, the fuel log.
Yes, so that way you can at least let us know what you are, already started to implement.
Can amend it and bring it back for your approval?
Yes.
With those additions?
Yes, so in September. Yes, please. And, um, I just want to say, uh, I know that they, we did have a backpack giveaway, but the, the correction is that the, the actual church that was doing the fixtures of the vehicle, I mean, the bikes, that have been doing this for years and it's Cross City Church and Lidos de los Vias. They are the ones who have done this for many, many years. One of my friends actually is part of the church for Cross City and, um, they've done a fantastic job. They always give out to the community. I also participated in that, even though some people don't want to take notice of that, um, because I did, was given, uh, backpacks from the Latino mayors. Latino mayors, uh, donated to all the mayors to donate, uh, backpacks to their communities, so, um, we were, it's not a city thing, it was a church. I parti- I was going to give it to the church to actually hand them out instead of me being there, but, uh, Pastor Abel from Lidos de los Vias asked me to be present, so I told him I would do that. Um, and it was the best thing that I could have done because I was able to engage with everybody there. They were great people and they were doing a fantastic job. I think that they always give back, they always work with the community, especially, uh, city, uh, Cross City Church and Lidos de los Vias. Lidos de los Vias has always been very, very involved with the city. And Elinda's now starting to, uh, to give back to the community. She's also, uh, working with, uh, uh, giving, um, pre, you know, foods. Uh, ta dando de comer a los, a los, a los ancianos y los, y a los, los que están en la calle. So that's the great thing that, that she's doing, but the, I, unity is always the best thing because when you have the churches and everybody united, you can do more things. And when everybody's divided, you're not going to get anywhere by, by accusing and attacking. That's not the way it should be, even though we may have differences, but it's always best to just agree to disagree. And sometimes, you know, I've never had that problem with my last council. I know that I've had that, we have disagreed with, um, with, uh, me and you, Trino, always disagreed, but we always knew when to come together, when it was time to come together and make decisions based on the city's benefit. Not our benefit, but the city's benefit. So the, one of the comments that was made about the reason that I'm the reason of the lawsuit, no, the reason of the lawsuit is because Kathy Solorio actually disclosed closed session information to the, uh, former city, uh, former chief of police and that is what is stated on the actual deposition, that that's what she stated of, of information that was given from closed session to him. But I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I can't, I, I'm always getting accused, uh, I'm the fault, I terminated. There was no termination, there's more, there's more to it that, that most know.
Uh, excuse me.
And that's why, and, and that's, I need to defend myself.
The political.
Mayor, mayor, excuse me.
It was okay for her to say what she said about me, Megan, and that's not right. I looked at you and didn't say anything.
On-going litigation is, should be reserved.
It's in a deposition that is in a pop and a court document, it's not confidential. So I'm just disclosing what's already there. So that is my right to defend myself and there is no reason why I could not, I looked at you when you allowed her to go ahead and say,
Mayor.
That it was because of me.
Mayor, excuse me.
It's not because of me, so now that that's been said, that's what I wanted to share with you. So with that, I also have a question for Jeff. Jeff, did you ever get the, um, the, uh, flow chart that I had asked for?
Yes, we were working on putting together two different flow charts, one that is for dissemination to the public, kind of as a brochure, the other of which is for internal staff, so they know how processes work.
Okay, so then, would you be bringing that to the next meeting or?
I, it's not really a, I mean, we can bring it to you to show you.
Just so that we can, that.
Sure.
It's more for the public because I, I, this is what I've explained to you the last time, that it's not, it's not for me, because I know there's a process. I know that, that, that's the process, but a lot of the times people come in and they don't understand the process and they make accusations that the staff's not doing their job because they think everything is here. So just so that it's presented, just an informational thing maybe when you get a chance.
Okay.
And Javier, thank you. I, I know that it was a lot of hard work on all the projects that we previously approved and, and is now finally coming to. and, and is now finally coming to fruition, you know? It takes some time, so I'm glad that the, the, uh, J Street, um, project is, is also getting done. Downtown is looking great. I can't wait for that to get done. Um, the other one that my concern is, is that it's been delayed, is the actual complex for, for, um, the sports complex, and I know, I know there's a process. I know that we, you already developed everything. Everything's designed. Everything's ready to move, um, only because of the, uh, small, uh, part that, that, um, the property was not transferred over because of-
Uh, excuse me, Ms. Mayor. And as regarding the, this matter you're discussing, um, we have another matter coming up.
I, I just wanted to thank you for, I'll, let me finish up.
Thank you, it's fine, but no discussion of the project, please.
Yes, why not?
Um, do you wanna go take a break, or do you wanna finish up?
I would like to know why not.
I'm, I can discuss it with you in closed session.
If there was something that I could not discuss on, then maybe that, that communication should have given, been given to me before.
We do have a closed session item coming up.
Was it given to me before? Is it on the, on the agenda that says that the property? Does it have that?
Uh, would you like to take a break?
No, I'm asking your question, Megan.
Well, I'm not gonna respond.
Okay, 'cause it's not on there, so.
No, I, don't, don't assume anything.
Let me just finish off, Megan, please, please, please. 'Cause it's just about, people are asking about this project, and I'm always gonna communicate with my public. If it's something that's, has been agendized for closed session, then that should have been just, at least informed. I was not informed.
So, so, can we move forward, please, Ms. Mayor? Please, please.
Okay, thank you. So I would just wanna know, I know it's, it's been, it's been a process, and people are asking about that project, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, is that it is happening, because they are, are asking if it's not gonna happen because of all the delays. Now, those delays are not gonna make, they're not gonna stop the project from moving forward. So to me, it's that I just want the people to know that this project is moving forward. You did have something to present. It's going to probably wait till we get a resolution of what's going on, but I just wanted them to know that you have worked tirelessly on this project. It is, it is projected to be done by this year, because we have to use those funds by the end of the year. So that's one. Now, on the other one for the water rate that you mentioned, that it was approved in twenty twenty-one, that is correct. The reason why it was approved in twenty twenty-one was because we had a project with a TCP project, that's a TCP project, that was approved for fundings for us to do that project. Now we have funds that were actually, uh, approved by the state water board that I missed, mentioned at the last meeting. So that's funds that we already have that are, uh, coming, that already came that we got approved. When did we get approved for that, um, the water fund, funds?
Um, maybe it's two thousand seventeen, I'd, I'd have to get back to you.
Twenty-two? Because if this was approved in twenty-one, then we got the funds after twenty-one, correct?
I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
'Cause there was a change in the, in the grants at some point.
From the, for the TCP project, so it's fully funded. So once we put that back in the agenda for us to discuss further, there will be an explanation as to why it's on the agenda. But I just wanted to clarify that, yes, it was approved, but it was with the reasons that they were not no funds for that project. So those funds were not there at that time until now. So now it's fully funded, and that's why I requested for, uh, sorta to put this item on the agenda, so that we can eliminate that fee that is not necessary. Instead of keeping taxing our people, I wanna make, make sure that they don't continue to get taxed.
Um, Mayor, excuse me. This matter is not on the agenda.
I'm just-
It is not on the agenda. It is not part of the meeting.
My council comments, uh, Megan.
Then your comments need to be general, not specific to the details of the project.
Well, that's clarification to my public.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Megan, I can't agree with you. It's not-
And it is not in keeping with the agenda or with the Brown Act.
We're not taking action, Megan.
So-
It's for clarity and direction, as far as, like you said earlier, that the council can actually talk about an item.
Do you have a question?
To talk about an item that they want to put on the next agenda.
That's fine.
They can do it, but I cannot get clarification.
Do you have a question?
So to me is that that's what the project was about. So, um, I'm asking to make sure that you bring that information for the, um, next meeting in, um, September fifth, Chief, for, uh, for that project, for the actual tax, uh, water rate study that, well, not the raw water rate study, but-
I'm gonna communicate with, uh, Dan Bergman on that.
Yes, so that way, when you can get him here, so that way, can you bring that information as well as when it was approved? The water, um, the water, uh, board approved those funds for the City of Parlear? Okay?
Yeah.
Uh-huh, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not done. Um, so that's all I wanted to say, and, um, I wanna thank everybody that was- That was not closed session. So how do you know what's gonna be in closed session? 'Cause all it says is legal, potential litigation. How does, how do you know? Kathy? How do you know if it says potential litigation? Huh? So you know more than I do. That's, that's not good. So I wanna thank everybody for being here. Um, you know, it is important that you guys are informed and what's going on, so I will always be there speaking for the people, um, always, like I used to do it when I was sitting over there, and bringing up the issues that everybody has the right to know. You know, 'cause, um, it doesn't matter. I know what my rights are. So I will continue to do what I can. I will continue to fight, to bring to, to, to the public and to make this community a lot better. So, thank you. Now we can move on to the closed session item. Megan?
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I never make motions to close the, I just go into, um, closed session.
Well, I'm asking, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Megan, I've never made a motion, and it's a discretion of the chair.
Oh, then if you choose not to, then that's up to you.
That's, that's what I, I choose not to.
So we're not going to closed session?
No, not to make a motion. That's, that's my... Okay.
If your mayor chooses not to, then she can just announce we're going into-
That's what I've always announced. We're going into closed session. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, when we go into closed session, we'd ask that you please leave the room, um, since it's a confidential session.
And can you address the public with the, uh, closed session item? Is it potential?
Yes, there's just one item. It says conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine. One case.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
As soon as we get that, I'll get that examined over.
Thank you. I like your Spanish, by the way. I need to work on it. Well, I like your T-shirt, too.
Oh, thank you.
Very nice.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, we're back and there's nothing to report. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Goodness, that was...